Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 25, 2019 Board Meeting of Mathacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes rebroadcasting. By way of attendance, we have all board members in attendance this evening with the exception of Ms. Reese and Mr. Navarette. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers. Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. Before we move on to recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, I'd ask the board and the members of the audience to please join me in a moment of silence as we remember our friend, teacher, and colleague, Ms. Cindy Castle. Thank you. Ms. Castle has been an employee of the Mathacton School District for nearly 26 years, four years as an instructional assistant, 22 years as a teacher with the past 20 at Eagle ville Elementary School. She passes this past Saturday, June 22. Her maiden name was Costin Bayer and she was a proud graduate from the Mathacton School District, class of 1984. We've been fortunate to have been touched by her love of teaching and we extend our deepest sympathy to her husband, Mark, and their family. With the agenda this evening, we have Audubon Elementary School proposal from Lower Providence Township. We have Mr. Peter McFarland and Mr. Patrick Duffy to make a recommendation to the board. The board, if you so kind, take their seats in the front row and we'll get the projector and everything ready. Thank you.
Again, as Dr. Zerbi introduced, I'm Peter McFarland. I'm the chairman of the Board of Supervisors for Lower Providence and I'm accompanied by Supervisor Patrick Duffy to talk with you about our thoughts on the Audubon Elementary School. And I'll start out by thanking you for the opportunity to share with you our vision of what could be a very valuable property for all of the residents in the district. The building has historic importance in the township. It's one of the few remaining buildings of that age and of the public domain and it's had many significant emotional value to many residents, many of whom attended classes there as long as 40 and 50 years ago. And I can tell you that more than a few have asked me about the future while expressing their sentimental feelings for the school itself. So it does have value to a number of residents from that standpoint. The location, the size, and the structure offer an ideal opportunity for a community center serving residents from the entire Mathacton School District. And the open land can be excellent and central recreational and park use space. The land total is 14 acres. These are approximations. The building and the parking occupy about two acres. Stormwater runoff, which I'll point out a bit in the next slide, and Mine Creek eliminate perhaps two or three acres of usable land in a traditional sense. So that leaves nine or 10 acres available for recreational use, which would be for practice fields for the school district, practice and game fields for local soccer teams, lacrosse and field hockey teams, and for playground and general recreational use. So there would be a number of opportunities for many organized groups within the town to utilize this property where much of many properties are at a premium for them at this point. Taking a brief overview, and I apologize for this being a bit blurry, but we'll just look at it from the overall shape. I'm sure you all recognize as we look at the school building itself and the parking and paved areas on the lower left part. Above that is an open field and to the far left in upper left is the existing basketball courts. Then coming across to the right, there is on the corner of that squared off area, there is a baseball backdrop. There is a playground to the right of that at the rear of the school. So there is already a number of recreational use opportunities within that space. Just to the right of that, which is hard to see on this, between that Crawford Road parking lot and the school itself, is a creek that runs through the property, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And that pedestrian bridge that runs from the parking lot to the school passes over the top of that creek. All of that land from the bottom right between the parking lot and the school and fanning out above the parking lot in this picture but downhill is all what would be considered flood plain and would have to be dealt with to allow proper drainage and water to go through there. So there's a number of things that are on there and there are existing conditions that have to be recognized. And overall, this makes for a very excellent property, I'm sure redundantly. This is at Egypt Road and Crawford Road, so it's very central. There are houses all around it that are easily accessible to this property along with many other people who could easily reach it by vehicle. So to talk to you a bit about the thoughts on this, I'll turn it over to Mr. Duffy.
So the Board of Supervisors envisioned Audubon School as a vibrant center of activity that can bring the whole community together for a multitude of purposes. The grounds, as Peter mentioned, is to nine to 10 usable acres where we'd like to bring all aspects of the community, whether those be school teams, community teams, different organizations, to use the practice fields and play out there. I know I grew up playing basketball out there every Sunday afternoon growing up and I know Mr. Bickelman was there often playing basketball with us. So it has always been a center of recreation. It is centrally located across from the club at Shenondale, which is recreational activity in the township. So we want to utilize it and make this more of a center to give back to the residents, but also to help revitalize parts of Audubon in that downtown area, which ultimately helps the entire community by raising property values and tax revenue sources for both the school district and the township. One of the main aspects that we'd love to use it for is Camp Perkiomi. Currently, we use a few of the elementary schools for Camp Perkiomi and that program is very popular. It sells out in two to three days, often with just residents of Lower Providence. We don't even have the ability to open it up to the residents of Worcester because that program is sold out. And many working families use that program as their daycare for their children. I think our waiting list this year was close to 90 kids that wanted to do it and we didn't have the space for them to do it. So we'd love to see the expansion of the Camp Perkiomi program. We also envision a walking path around the property, bring seniors, adults, mothers, fathers out walking their children in their carriages and their strollers, playing on the playgrounds and being there. It's a great place. I know we've seen with the Mascaro Park that that walking path over there is used constantly. And we'd love to do that in this section of town, too. There already is a playground there and we'd like to improve that playground and bring kids to this area. As Peter mentioned, it's pretty much a school building or a community center or park that is in a residential center where they're in the middle of the community. So what better way to utilize that space than to continue to make it a center of vibrant community activity? And also, we have plenty of parks and rec programs that need additional space, whether it's decorating cupcake classes, guitar lessons, yoga classes. We have a lot of different things that we could utilize that space for to expand our parks and recreational program. The building itself provides plenty of opportunities, too. We'd love to see it used as a senior center during the day. As I said, indoor camp for Camp Perkiomi when the weather is inclement. The Parks and Recreation gave us a long list of potential uses for it, including some of storage equipment in general use, like I said, their classes and their programs. There's been some increased interest lately in starting an art league in Lower Providence. We think that this would be a tremendous place to have art studios and not only have the studio and the works done there, but also display those in the tremendously historic building. Likewise, the Lower Providence Historical Society has long been looking for a venue to display some of their catalog of important documents, pictures, artifacts. It'd be a perfect place for that. I know in the Lower Providence Township meeting room on our back wall there, we have a picture of the Audubon School, an actual artwork from 1929 when it opened, together with three of the one-room schoolhouses that ultimately closed and those children went to the Audubon School in 1929. And what's really neat about that piece of work is that all of the students from the one-room schoolhouse signed that piece and then all the kids that went to the Audubon School also signed that piece of art. So there's a lot of names, a lot of family names on there that you would recognize from longtime Lower Providence. So this is a tremendously significant building to the community and the town and we want to preserve it. Lower Providence is one of only two municipalities in southeastern Montgomery County and southeastern Pennsylvania, the other one being White Marsh, that is certified by the state to run a daycare facility. We actually have that certification as part of our Camp Perkiomi program for the littlest, the three and the four-year-olds. I know there is a tremendous desire in the township to have affordable daycare and that is something that we could offer potentially, hire the staff to do that if we had the space to offer it. Moving on to the next slide. As Peter mentioned, as I mentioned before, it is an asset for the Mathacton School District. What I think is very important to note is that this building, this property, will never be commercial property. In recent weeks and months, I've been talking to a lot of the neighbors in that area and this is their number one concern, is what's going to happen with the Audubon School property. They love the fact that it is there as a community resource and they're afraid that it's going to become additional commercial property. It's not zoned for commercial. It is only zoned for R2 residential, single-family houses, meaning that you need a 25,000 square foot lot or bigger to put a house there. Obviously, the value is owned by the residents of Lower Providence and Worcester and we want to keep that value with the residents of Lower Providence and Worcester and make it a community center for all of them. I know Mathacton currently pays maintenance costs on that building, whether it's heating, interior maintenance, insurance, snow plowing, security, mowing. We'd like to try to take some of those expenses off of you and bring them into our house so that we can help keep the property central and usable by the residents, but not be a burden to the school district any longer. So when we looked at it, we tried to come up with what we thought might be some of the options that the school district had. Obviously, the school could sell it. Two options, right? Sell it as is, hope that somebody doesn't flip it to a charter school or something else where it's operating as a school, which would be a drain in taking resources and students from the Mathacton School District and the great Mathacton Schools we have, where they could sell it to a developer who tears down the asset and puts single-family homes up there. I don't think anybody wants to see more homes on that property. There are also site restrictions and site improvements that make developing it as single-family homes problematic. There's a stream crossing. There's water management issues. Since Egypt Road is a state road, there would probably be access issues going out on the Egypt Road, which would require coming out on the Crawford Road and having bridge crossing and bridge construction over the creek. There's also possible traffic signal improvements that would be needed. And anybody that would look to develop as a single-family homes would obviously have to put that money into demolishing the building or remediation costs for the building, which reduces the potential sale price for any such building. I'm going to turn it back over to Peter to finish up the presentation here.
So obviously, what we've been presenting so far is visionary. There is no practical plan, but we would hope that going forward, we could talk to that. Lower Providence also understands that if for some reason we were able somehow to reach accommodation with the school board, that there would be significant cost to renovate the building to make it useful for the purposes that we've mentioned. There would also be a need to do some land improvements, including stormwater management, some adjustments to driveway and parking, and some adjustments in work on the playground, walking path, and recreational fields. Of these, of course, the largest investment cost would be for the township in the building and what would be necessary there. We assume, we don't know, that we would have to do electrical, we possibly could be mowed and possibly asbestos, just based on the year it was constructed and the widespread use of asbestos during that time. We don't know that that's there, but we assume that there might be some necessary steps in that regard. So there is a big challenge. It's not as simple as just walking into the current building. So we're looking into a private-public partnership. The school has done this in the past. You have fields that you've had assistance from private partners. We're looking at possible donations to allow us to fund the original section of the gym and cafeteria areas. We're not sure about the classroom wings as to whether they'd be immediate or whether they'd be taken down or whether we'd continue to use those. Including, again, remediation. We would want to provide, make sure we had current requirements for handicapped access, if necessary rewiring the building, especially for computers and media. We would expect to replace the heating system and the roof. So whether these are entirely accurate is really not my point. My point is that we recognize that there would be a significant investment necessary should we come to an agreement where the township could have use of the building, that a number of expenses would have to be incurred in order to make this a valuable asset to the community. So again, just having given you a bit of our vision, we hope that a path forward might be that we could agree that public use of the land is the optimal future concept. We recognize that there are costs on both sides involved in trying to get to that endgame, but we would hope that the consideration would be that if possible, that would be the optimal future concept. We would ask if we could form subcommittees from the township and the school board to allow the township and the district to discuss financial models that would work for both parties. And we would expect and hope to complete those initial discussions in 60 to 90 days so as not to extend this discussion too long. So I would only ask as we close that we try to find a way to work together, find a way forward. We'd like to repurpose this property for the benefit of everyone and we'd like to save the Audubon School to serve future generations as it has for the past 90 years. Thank you and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I'd just ask the board to look easy and back to their chairs and we'll pass the questions to the board. Hi, Liz. Thanks for having us. Hey, Brian. How are you? Good, how are you? Again, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions from members of the board at this time regarding the information or any clarifications necessary? Anyone to my right? No? Anyone to my left?
I just want to thank you for coming out and presenting to us tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present our thoughts and we appreciate this. We hope we look forward to hearing from you soon.
Yeah, just a couple of things. And thanks for bringing this to us tonight. And some of these questions might be too early and if so, just say so. Is the current thought that where would the property ownership remain? Is there any thoughts about what? Because what I'm having a hard time balancing is, I understand that this would be a great asset for the Lower Providence community, but as you know, we represent Lower Providence and Worcester. And I'm having a hard time bridging the gap between, I see the benefit of Lower Providence, especially those immediate areas, but the farther reaches of Worcester? How would those residents benefit when they have the great distance as well as other similar options in their community with parks and their township and other community type of centers?
Mr. Entschard, it's a great question. And we envision this really being a center for all of the Mathacton School District. Whether you reside in Lower Providence or you reside in Worcester, we can open up and make Camp Perkiomi equally accessible to the residents of Worcester as it is to Lower Providence if we have that extra space to accommodate them. We can give classes and give the same discounts to Worcester residents that we give the Lower Providence residents. All of those accommodations can be made to keep it as a true community center for all of the Mathacton School District. Obviously, I think that if the township is expending large sums of money to improve the building, to maintain it, we would look to have some sort of interest in the title. I think all of those details can be worked out through council and through the subcommittees and whatnot. But yes, certainly, we would like to have some sort of title in it and make it perfectly acceptable and accessible to all of the residents of the Mathacton School District.
Can I just add a couple of things? It's a good question and it's one that we certainly would like to discuss. The property itself of 14 acres and the options that we could discuss does not necessarily mean that all 14 acres would have to be part of this transition. There's a possibility that we didn't present, but again, we'll go into it in further detail, where some of it might be sold for development that is not under some duress of development and other parts of it, like the building, might be kept. But we didn't present that because that's not our recommended option. It's just one of many that we think could be an option.
And again, it's early, but you mentioned like public-private partnership, like the way the Fields Project was funded. Have you done any exploratory work in that regard or?
Only very informally. We have no authority to suggest that we're in a position to ask for that. So we've mentioned it to three or four different private parties. We've had some interest in a very general way, but we've had no discussions about commitments to dollar amounts or construction because we don't really even know what that is.
Okay. And then would part of these discussions with the subcommittees, that be defining not only how development costs will be handled, but ongoing maintenance and so forth? And I don't know what's going to happen down the road, but the possibility where if that property ever had to become a school building again, could that be possibly factored in? Not saying that would happen, but who knows what's going to happen 20, 25 years down the road.
Again, yes, I mean, those are all part of what we would hope would be a discussion. The first meeting, if you will, if we can form these committees, would be to frame the discussion so that we understand the options we want to discuss, what is unacceptable, what is acceptable, so that we can then move forward with a little more depth in maybe a narrower framework of what would be an acceptable path forward. So all of that is, at this point, we don't have a specific direction that we feel is necessary. We're open to discussion on all those variations.
And I think the most important thing to glean from this is that we want to keep this building, this property, as is now, for public use. What that looks like today versus tomorrow versus 30 years from now, who knows? But if the school district sells it off and it becomes homes, it has no chance of ever coming back to being a school building if it's needed. But if it's in public domain, that possibility always exists.
Okay. All right. That was it. Thank you.
My comment is, I thank you for that. I live in Worcester Township and I think one of the biggest things is the summer camp, how it's not offered, especially as a working parent, not being able to utilize that. So opening the camp to the both districts is absolutely, and I do think ARA Fields and so forth, we find a lot of Worcester people going all the way over there. So providing practice fields and recreational and art and the different programs, I think, would benefit both. My only biggest concern is that during the discussion, when you talk about private partnership and areas of development, that's just my biggest concerns of who that private developer is that's interested where that development is. Because I do want it to stay as a recreational use for the community. We need a community center and I think it would be phenomenal if we stayed true to that concept.
Thank you. I would only say that if we were to discuss the private-public partnership, it would only be a donation or a reduced cost of the work to be done, not any kind of transfer of ownership. That's not something we would consider.
And with that, it wouldn't be a commercial venture with the private partner. It would have to be, as Peter said, a donation of their time or their talents or their treasure. It wouldn't be that they have any kind of ownership or any kind of say in how the building is operated or run in the future. It would be a gift.
I'd really like to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other comments? Mr. Ryan?
Thank you very much for the presentation. More of a question for our solicitor here. In terms of legal aspects, what options does the school district have in terms of either fully owning or partially owning a property or a building that's now being used as a school?
I think, first of all, I haven't researched this particular issue in this context, so I think if there were committees or subcommittees formed, that could be part of it, would be researching the district's legal options. There are specific provisions of the public school code that address the school district's sale and as well as donation of property. And there are different provisions depending upon which course of action the board would choose. So for instance, if the property were donated by a school to a municipality within the school district, there are certain requirements about that property reverting to the school district if it were not used for a municipal purpose. There are different provisions if there's going to be some sort of sale, what value the property will be sold at. All of that has different legal provisions applied to it. I can certainly look into them and what, but that would be one aspect of it, would be to consider all of those requirements.
Thank you. I would just ask that we follow up along those lines and try and provide that information to the board at some point soon. The only other comment I have, and I agree with the, you want to get this done sooner rather than later, but in terms of the 60 to 90 days, especially with all the discussions regarding Arrowhead that we're doing now, is this a feasible task to get done with the, in terms of board members having time to do this along with the other things? And can we have both of these conversations moving on at the same time? That's just a concern I would have as a board right now.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I also want to thank you for coming out. I'm traveling around, you do see these community centers and understand the benefit for a community, just in Annapolis last month and just having, obviously, a newer one, but it really does sort of become a magnet for a community, be it Lower Providence and Worcester or just Lower Providence. Two quick, I would support further discussions. I don't know about the timeline either, but I just have a question. Since the township owns General Washington Golf Course, the old General Washington Golf Course, that was purchased and, so can you go through the, I know you guys own Supervisors at that time, but what is the relationship between Lower Providence? Have we owned that? Are we running it? Is it a loss? Did you buy it straight out from the, or was it always owned by the township?
So, Mr. Winters, thank you. The property is currently owned by the township. I think it was purchased in like 1994, 95, well before Peter and I were on the board. It was purchased with some open grant money from the county as well as a loan that the township took out. And I believe at the time was a voter referendum issue. I'm not sure, but there was something back then, and I was still in high school, but there was something back then about, you know, the community wanted to keep that open space as opposed to being developed for single-family homes. So the township stepped up and made sure that it was preserved as open space. For a while, the township had a municipal authority that ran the ice skating rink and the pool and the golf course. Ultimately, that municipal authority wasn't able to do it, so the township, and it wasn't able to make it work. So the township entered into a contract to lease it out to the current people that hold the lease, who have built the new restaurant, the new pool, and have kept up and improved the golf course. I think their lease has quite a few years left on it. The good news for the residents of Lower Providence Township is that there's less than five than five years left on any of the debt. So we are getting an annual lease payment. It doesn't necessarily cover all the debt payment, but again, it was not purchased to make money. It was purchased to keep the land as open space for, for the residents of the township and not have it developed as, as homes or otherwise. So, you know, across the street, we'll be debt-free and clear within under five years.
And was the agreement for that to stay as open public land or whatever, recreational land?
Yeah, for, if it weren't to be open space or designated open space, the township would have to pay back the county portions of the money that it got from the county. I think it's the clear vision of the board to always keep that as open space and maintain it as open space, because the one thing they're not making more of is land. So to the extent that you can keep land that is community land open, I think that it should be everybody's primary purpose.
And I'm fairly certain, without having reviewed the contract, that the leaseholder has no option with regard to that open space.
Yeah.
It has to be left the way it is.
And associated with that, do you see yourself, no matter what happens, if there was an agreement, renting the property to, it would be a facility for the entire broader community? It's not a income stream?
No, well, it wouldn't be an income stream to the extent that we're renting it out. Whether or not some of the programs for the parks and rec, whether it's Camp Perkiomi makes a small amount of money every year that helps fund some of the other programs, there are some fees associated with those programs. If we were able to operate a daycare that ultimately paid for itself and maybe generated a little bit of extra money for the township, you know, that's, that's something certainly that it could possibly generate some revenue. But it's not going to be a capitalistic venture. We really need a facility for our Parks and Rec Department to operate their programs. We need more space for Camp Perkiomi. We'd love to serve the residents of Worcester that, you know, are going down that direction anyway. If your daughter's playing softball at ARA and your son wants to take an art class, they're 30 seconds apart from each other, it's a perfect opportunity to do that and help revitalize that end of town for the township. You know, ultimately, if you have some connectivity between the property and the Audubon Village Shopping Center, if you want to walk from there to get a cup of coffee at the New Coffee House, we really see it as a way to bring back that area, to drive some, some people to look at the TD Bank Building or the Bud's Bar Building and try to bring some more economic prosperity back to that area.
Any other comments?
So I share some of the same questions and concerns that the other board members have had. The timeline does seem a little bit aggressive. I could see us starting conversations in the next 60 to 90 days, but as far as what it looks like from there, I think we'd have to work together to figure out a timeline that could be feasible, because we do have a lot going on with the Arrowhead property right now. That is, I think, a little bit more, there's a little more urgency to that, at least that's how I see it. One point that I wanted to clarify with the solicitor is if a charter school were to want to purchase that building, seeing what recently happened in the Narsetown School District, the board would have to approve the use of that space for a charter school. Is that correct?
I'd have to check the case on that. I know that there are a number of disputes involving school district buildings and charter schools, and so it's a slightly unsettled area of the law, and I could certainly check into that as well.
Okay. Hopefully, it won't come to that. When you talk about the township having some title in this, are you envisioning this as being like a three-way partnership between the district, the township, and a private enterprise that's helping to fund this? Or, okay, if you could elaborate a little bit more on what you envision that partnership looking like?
And again, there are various ways that we can look at that. The partnership, if there was such a partnership, would be between the school district and the township, not any third party with respect to construction or other costs. We have no, we've had no discussion, have no vision of having a third party involved. What that partnership looks like is what we think discussion needs to be, whether that's a partial or a full transfer, whether that's, you know, has leasing in it. All of those things are discussion points. And to come back to the 60 to 90, I would retract that and say, we're ready to move at the pace that you wish to move. We don't have a timeline that we have to meet. So I was just trying to point out that we're prepared to have these discussions at your convenience.
And I definitely appreciate that, that you're kind of ready to move it at our pace. That helps. The other concern that I would have, seeing what has happened with the General Washington property now, Shenondale, and knowing that Shenondale and the pool there is technically township-owned, but is not accessible to many of the residents, it's cost prohibitive. I would have a concern with Camp Perkiomi and the programs that are being offered there still being financially accessible to families, because I think that a big part of the success of Camp Perkiomi is not just the program, but also the price point. I mean, for working families, it is a tremendous bargain, and it's what makes families able to provide a camp experience for their children. So I don't want to see something happen, you know, you're talking about generating a little bit of revenue, and I understand that, but I would want to make sure that we're clear about what that would look like, so that we aren't pricing families out of opportunities that they currently have.
Ms. Larsonis, we agree 100%. We don't, we see it as a service to our residents, and if we can extend that to the residents of Worcester, we'd love to do that. If we could extend that to year-round for, you know, two, three, four-year-olds, for those same working families that have, you know, tremendous daycare expenses throughout the, I would say, the school year as opposed to the summer, it's an option that we can obviously pursue. When I say that Camp Perkiomi makes a little bit of revenue, you're talking about a couple hundred dollars to, you know, $1,500. It's, it's not like it's a, you know, $30,000 revenue source for the township. It does pay for itself. There are some years, depending on, you know, if you have rain days and different activities get canceled, and you save on some busing and, you know, some admissions to some of the trips that they take, it maybe makes a little more or a little less. But the point is, with Camp Perkiomi, we are full. We are busting at the seams. There were 100 residents of Lower Providence that didn't have their children in it this year, because we just don't have the space. And we'd love to provide that service to those residents and to the residents of Worcester.
Are there any other comments? If not, given the dialogue this evening, if there's no objection from members of the board, I'd like to have a conversation with the board president and see if we can find some individuals from the board to at least have an initial meeting as part of a, part of a larger conversation. And as Mr. Ryan so mentioned, determine, you know, do we have the bandwidth necessary as a board to continue that? But I think having at least one meeting might be reasonable and then deciding how to work going forward. We can come up with a timeline and come back to the board and make sure that everybody's comfortable with that and having, if it comes to two conversations about two different buildings during the same time, and the board's okay with that, then great. If it needs to be changed, some other timeframe, we'll do that. But I'd like to work with the president to, and then communicate with Mr. Delamater at the township to maybe schedule a meeting in the very near future. Is that, if no objections to that, we'll work towards that. Then I think the best thing that we can do is, for the interest of the public, is make sure that, you know, at least we and the township on a regular basis just communicate up to our constituencies about, you know, the progress of that dialogue and that conversation, so that, you know, we're all on target and keeping everybody apprised. That sounds okay? Is that fine? Okay. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you. We look forward to hearing from you.
One last thing. Could we get copies of the presentation? I don't know if you want to make those publicly available.
We have, we have a, we have a copy. So is it okay to post it on our website?
Sure.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
So we'll get you hard copies of that, electronic copies, and we'll post it on the district website. Good point. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
That ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. And with that, we will move on to our reports. For the Finance Committee, we have Mr. Earnshaw.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on June 12th. Meeting was called to order at 6:30. All committee members were in attendance. As we usually do, we start with our monthly financial reports, including the list of bills, treasurer's report, budgetary transfers, May's expenditure and revenue reports, and the healthcare report from the consortium from May. Discussion topics included the 2019-2020 budget update, 2019-20 taxes, or the real estate taxes, proposed depositories for next fiscal year, the 2019-20 homestead-farmstead resolution, 19-06, school and breakfast lunch prices, the projection for the current fiscal year from a financial basis, use of the unallocated fund balance, and the student activity accounts. The details of those discussions are in the minutes of the meeting. And for courtesy of the floor, we heard from Mr. John Andrews from Lower Providence, Jim Mogg from Worcester, Paul Winters from Lower Providence, and the topics they discussed and commented on are in the minutes as well, and the meeting adjourned at 9:15 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. For Property and Transportation, I believe we have Ms. Hall filling in for Mr. Navaret. Thank you, Ms. Hall.
The Property and Transportation Committee meeting was on June 10th. Meeting was called to order at 6:30 p.m. In attendance were Mr. Navaret, Mrs. Reese, Dr. Zerbi, Mr. Bricker, and Mr. Miller from Fidavia. For the master plan, Mr. Miller presented the committee with updated financial summary for the 2018 projects, for 2019 capital projects. Mr. Miller presented the committee with an updated timeline for 2019 projects, and an updated financial summary and project list were presented. The committee was presented with an updated master plan showing accurate costs and current estimates through 2019, 2020 capital projects. The committee discussed the need for the Finance Committee to review funding options for 2020 projects. Mr. Bricker gave an update on transportation during courtesy of the floor. Mr. Bickelman and Mr. Malik had input, and the meeting adjourned at 7:24 p.m. Please see the minutes for details.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. For the Education Committee, we do not have Ms. Reese here. Ms. Kankrow, do you have the minutes?
So the Education Committee met on 6/4 at 6:30 in the Farina Building. In attendance, all committee members were in attendance. The discussion topics were the district athletics and activities, where Dr. Spiewak gave an extensive review of student activities and athletics. We discussed the intensive therapeutic mental health support, where the new topic in Montgomery County, where Dr. Angstad discussed, and district plan that would include many benefits to the students and district as a whole. There were other key action items for the 2018-19, which involve main curriculum objectives through district K through 5 wonder support, grade six collections, grade seven and eight, with social studies, algebra, and trigonometry, German honors, AP research, Alex Extended, 7 through 12 Exact Path and Linkit. We discussed the federal program monitoring summary. We also discussed the Exact Path with possible replacement for Study Island, discussion on Linkit as well, and then the August meeting was added for 8/6/18. There was no courtesy of the floor noted, and it adjourned at 10:05.
Thank you, Ms. Kankrow. And for Policy Committee, doing double duty, Mrs. Hall.
The Policy Committee met on June 5th. The meeting was called to order at 6:30 p.m. In attendance were Ms. Aubrey Larsonis, myself, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Winters, Dr. Zerbi, and Ms. Montine. Policies that are brought forth for first reading are Policy 138, English as a Second Language, bilingual education program, Policy 246, school wellness, Policy 618, student activity funds, Policy 626, federal fiscal compliance, Policy 130, homework, Policy 126, class size, Policy 306, employment of summer school, Policy 317, conduct and disciplinary. Under Old Business, Mr. Ryan discussed PSBA delegate representatives from the board. There was no public input during courtesy of the floor, and the meeting adjourned at 8:25 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. For the intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan?
I do not have a report for this evening. The IU Board will be meeting tomorrow night.
All right. Thank you. And North Monco Tech Career Center, Ms. Drummond.
Yes, on, a team of faculty administrators and community business owners, including joint operating committee members Andrew Reese and me, met on June 12th to discuss the comprehensive plan for North Monco Tech, which is due to PDE every three years. We discussed current practices and avenues for future growth. The regular JOC meeting was held on June 17th. We discussed revamping program space with a look to expanding the Popular Mechatronics Program. The growing popularity of North Monco Tech, as of June, many programs were filled and some had a waiting list. And finally, we discussed enhancing and ensuring school safety, and discussed best practices and how they ensure the safety of all who attend and work at North Monco Tech. There will be no JOC meeting in July. Our next meeting will be in August.
Thank you, Ms. Drummond. We do not have our student board representatives here, as school is out for the summer, and the Mathacton Education Foundation is not with us with the report this month, but I'm sure we'll be hearing for them, from them soon. So I will now turn it back to Superintendent's report and Dr. Zerbi.
The only notice that I have is that last week, we issued, we issued a survey on the Arrowhead Forward. We not only sent a postcard out, but we have a survey online, and we're asking residents of the community to complete that survey so they can give their input as to the presentation that KCBA provided back on June 4th. It is our goal then to collect that data and to share that back with the community and the board, as well as come forward in July with an update on the process for the board as part of the consideration of what we need to do in terms of possible next steps with the Arrowhead property. That is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. At this time, we will take public comment on board action items, so this is any item that's on the agenda for the board to act on this evening. Any public comment? Dr. Malik.
Payment of the bills. There's one for KCBA architects. Says Arrowhead Study in Prince for $29.51. What's that for exactly?
We can address it when we get to that point in the meeting.
Why can't you give me an answer? Any reason? Is it a hard one?
Dr. Malik, it's the policy of the board to not engage in a back-and-forth communication. We'll address it when we get to that point in the meeting.
Well, you haven't followed board policy in the past, right? You violated board policy repeatedly, so what, you know, I don't understand what the, what distinction you're trying to make at this point. If the board doesn't follow its own board policy, I don't see what the big deal is, to be honest with you. Are the Prince referenced here? Were they used in Dr. Zerbi's May meeting with Lower Providence? As part of KCBA? Can't give me that answer either? Maybe you didn't know about the meeting. Sweet Stevens. March write-to-know fees, $13,000. What do we have, 100 write-to-know requests in March? Can somebody tell me what the breakdown is? 13 grand for write-to-now? That's unheard of. Worcester does it for $150 a write-to-know request. They're solicitors, so I don't know what's going on here. At $150, 13 grand is what, 130 write-to-know requests? I don't think we got that many in March, did we? I know I need to send 130 in. So something's not right. I don't think that's reflecting the whole value. I think there's other things mixed in with the 13 grand. Applied landscaping settlement. You have no amount, but it looks like you transferred 190 grand out of the capital campaign account. That money go towards the settlement? Anybody want to tell me? Anybody want to tell me? Or we're not allowed to know how much money was we had to pay out because of the board. Taxes in escrow. 4.99 million dollars. Is that the right figure? Do I have the right account? Can you tell me that one?
Do you have anything else, Dr. Malik?
I've got 30 seconds. I figured maybe I'll let you sweat it a little bit and think about it. Maybe you don't understand the question. Anybody have a plan for the 4.99 million?
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else with public comment on board action items?
John Andrews, Lower Providence. On the list of bills, the prior speaker, Dr. Malik, raised a lot of questions that certainly were on my mind. One of the policies up for change on a first reading is 126 on class size. Significant part of that being changed is the limits on enrollment in a class.
Mr. Andrews, I do want to just stop you right there. That's actually not up for a vote this evening. It's a first read. It won't be up for a vote until next month. So I do want to hear your comments, but it's not an agenda item for this evening.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. So the change is, and this is very brief. The change is from a class size limit of 25 for K to 2, changing that down to a class size of 22. And I think the policy should not be changed. I think the policy should have some flexibility in it. You know, I don't know exactly the dialogue that went into getting to a class size of 25, but I do respect that prior dialogue. And certainly, always, you know, the intent is to provide good education in those grades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Joe Bickelman, Audubon. Yeah, I was just taken back by the applied landscaping. Apparently, there's a check on the bills list that doesn't have an amount. And there's a transfer of $190,000 out of the capital campaign fund. I know there was executive session meetings on applied landscaping versus the district, and applied landscaping versus Dr. Zerbi. So I don't think any of these people that donated for the field should have to pay for any slip-ups that caused settlements to applied landscaping. I think they were donating to the athletic fields, and I think the district should take money, you know, to pay for that and not take the donations from the capital campaign if that's what it was so used for. But I'd hate to see that happen. The other thing I want to talk about is Item 10A. This wasn't on the work session agenda. It's the resignation of Troy Sisnovic, Director of Technology, Child Accounting, and Safety. I've been coming to the board meetings for over five years, and I've seen Troy. His presentations are very thorough. The jobs that he does, the Director of Technology, Child Accounting, and Safety. I know what kind of effort goes into those three areas. And he seems to do them very well. He is a thorough individual. He's very well-spoken. He's very diplomatic when he speaks. And he's going places. So I was sad to see his name on here. I thought he would be an asset that we would try to retain. I understand he's going somewhere to be an assistant superintendent, of which this district doesn't have one. But I'm really sad to see him go. He's a good guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a public comment on board action items for this evening? May I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were coming to the podium.
Given the, my name's Kelly Skinner, Lower Providence. Given the events that transpired in April with regard to gift programming, and I know that that issue was before the curriculum committee, I had a few additional points that I wanted to bring out. Am I permitted to speak on that tonight, or no?
That would be later on in the meeting during courtesy of the floor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes, the work session meeting minutes for the meetings held on May 16, 2019, and the board meeting held on May 22, 2019, is attached? Mr. Earnshaw, and a second, Ms. Drummond. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. Fiscal items, Mr. Bricker.
Tonight, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the Treasurers' Report, budgetary transfers, recommendation on the unallocated fund balance, depositories for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, change in school breakfast and lunch prices by 5 cents, student activity accounts to open the class of 2023 and close the class of 2019, and free 2019 master plan projects.
If I could just make a comment. If the board would please turn to 9H, Master Plan Projects. Should be noted that at the work session, there were two items, two additional items on this list with blanks, and then we were awaiting bids for two particular matters. Those bids came in substantially higher than what we had projected. And in fact, those bids came in, and this was for concrete work and canopy installation at the high school. They came in at 1.4, 1.6, and 1.8 million dollars for three various firms. We believe that going back out to bid at a more optimum time would allow us to receive better prices closer to the $1 million estimate that we had originally done. So I want to make the board aware that that item was removed. Now, that coincidentally creates another discussion for the board, and that means that about $1 million worth of planned estimated projects for this summer is no longer possible. So that means that the $6.8 million of planned projects will now be $5.8 million, of which there was a discussion, and a motion to put 1.2 million dollars from the allocated funds, is that, is 1.2? 2.1, I'm sorry. 2.1 from the committed funds towards the 6.8 estimated costs. I just want to make the board aware that we are likely approaching the deadline to decide or to actually borrow the money. And so I want to make sure that the board knows that we will have about $1 million less of projects for this summer, knowing that there are in the neighborhood of 70-some million dollars of projects in the pipeline over the next nine years. The challenge for us is to make sure that you're apprised of that, and if, in fact, you would want us to borrow less, meaning a million dollars less, based on the fact that we have a million dollars less of expense of these projects. So I want to make it known. And secondly, I want to get some feedback. I was able to share this with the Property Committee Chair because this is a particular property item who's not available here tonight, so I certainly won't speak for him. And I also had the opportunity to share this with the Finance Chair. And I don't know, Mr. Earnshaw, if you're available to speak on behalf of this challenge for this year.
Yeah, basically, I spoke to Dr. Zerbi, Mr. Bricker, this afternoon on this issue in preparation for tonight. And some of the questions I asked were, one, if we borrow an extra million dollars, what's that do to interest expense if the money is sitting in a bank? And Mr. Bricker informed me that the borrowing rate is expected to be around 2.5%. And we're currently earning about the same amount on our cash held in deposit. So from an interest expense income standpoint, it's pretty close to being a wash. And what we'll be able to do with this bond offering that we did not do with the last one is take money earned on those borrowings. The interest income can be used for other things than capital projects. So that money can be transferred to the general fund to offset the incremental interest expense that would be charged to the general fund. I also asked about borrowing costs and whether or not they were fixed or variable. And Mr. Bricker informed me that the majority of the costs are fixed, being PFM fees as well as the legal fees. There is some variability in the bond discount, but it's probably not a material number. If I may speak on any of that, Mr. Bricker.
No, that's accurate. The rates are quoted from PFM is what they provided me. The bond pricing is supposed to occur Thursday, so they would have to know by tomorrow morning what number they're going to go seek.
Right. So given those factors, it was my conclusion and recommendation that we proceed with the planned borrowing amount, given where we are. At this point, with as far as, you know, I'm sure bond documents are already drawn up and, you know, pretty much ready to go as Mr. Bricker rolls his eyes, and I would say you agree. So that's just my recommendation at this point.
It was also PFM's recommendation that we stay on this target, knowing that we have a number of projects in the pipeline for next summer and the preceding summer. So with that said, are there any other comments on this particular matter to my right?
Just a question along the lines of, you know, all three bids coming in higher than expected. Was this a timing issue? Do we wait too long in the process here to get this out to bid, and therefore, we're going to get numbers like this?
I think there's a number of items. I think timing is part of it. We are, the Fidavia team and Mr. Fretz are preparing to have that discussion with the Property Committee in this coming month meeting. But timing is part of it, from what I'm told.
And this is a follow-up. I mean, obviously, we'll get the report from the Property Committee, but if we can work on something like this moving forward, I mean, this is a rather large project that we had in the pipeline that we thought was coming. And it's very disappointing that we waited too long to get it out there, and now we're not going to get it done. So it's just delaying the projects that we need to get done.
Do you want to?
Are all these required to be done through the summer? Is it, could some of these projects, if we rebid this at a more opportune time in the marketplace, can these jobs be done when school's in session?
Now, this is major concrete pads and work that'll be outside. It would be high risk for us to assume that we're going to have good weather to do that. Any other questions?
I guess I would just wonder if there was anything else in the pipeline that was of a similar nature that maybe then, since we're not doing it now and we're deferring it, could be bundled with something else?
We looked into that, knowing we were in this position. We're equally disappointed in the fact that, you know, we're having this conversation this evening. But I think it's important that the board knows. And secondly, if there were some other projects that were ready to go, we would be certainly recommending those, but we're not at that point. In fact, the closest projects of any nature involve the HVAC and dehumidification project at the high school, which is still being drawn up. As you remember, about a month ago, or two months ago, you approved the drawings to start proceeding forward. So that would be ready. And certainly, we might be able to bid that out at best maybe in November or December. So I guess the part of this is, if there's no objection, we're not necessarily seeing any at this moment in time, considering the Finance Chair's recommendation, the Business Manager's recommendation, and PFM's recommendation. We're going to keep on that path and just know that it will be for these three projects and the other ones that you previously approved. That ends my comments on the financing matters.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve fiscal items A through C as presented? This is the list of bills, Treasurers' Report, and Budgetary Transfers. Mr. Earnshaw, and a second, Ms. Drummond. Comments from the board? I have one question. Mr. Bricker, if you could address the blank for Applied Landscape Technologies.
Based on the solicitor's recommendation, they were omitted from the report due to the settlement agreement.
And then the transfer from the capital campaign?
Along the same lines.
What about with the right-to-know with the 13,000? Do we have a number that correlates to that? How many right-to-knows were requested from our community?
It's not just the right-to-knows. That is also, there is to the right of that. On the list of bills, you'll also see policy review and other ones. It's just a summary of all the Sweet Stevens bills.
Is it summary for that particular month? Is that accurate?
Anyone else with any comments on these? So, Mr. Bricker, when you say along the same lines, are you saying that the capital campaign transfer is related to the Applied Landscape Settlement? Any other comments from the board? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 1. Can I have a motion to approve the unallocated fund balance ending in June 30, 2019, in excess of 7% of the budget to be committed for use for the facilities master plan? Mr. Ryan, and a second, Ms. Hall. Any comments from the board? Mr. Earnshaw?
Mr. Bricker, is there anybody any updates to the forecast that we looked at last, or is that we still have the same number?
I have not had a chance to update that.
Okay. So at that level, do you know how much of the 1.7 would be going towards the facilities master plan?
I do not at this time. I can get that for you, though.
Okay. With moving the money to be committed for the facilities master plan, there is still the ability for that to be moved elsewhere? Is that correct? So the plan would be to reduce, I guess, needed borrowings that is similar to what we did this year? Is that correct? That would be an option for the board? Okay. All right. That was it. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 6 to 1. May I have a motion to approve items E through G as presented here this evening? Mr. Winters, and a second. Ms. Kankrow. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. May I have a motion to approve items 1 through H as presented under the 2019 master plan projects? Ms. Hall, and a second, Mr. Winters. Any comments from the board?
Just to continue, I assume...
Just to continue, I assume that we're not borrowing a million dollars for the sake of borrowing a million dollars, and then saying that it's just a push because we're going to find how we're going to spend that in either the project that is defined or replace it with something over the next 12 months? Is that not the assumption? Or is... I assume that we're going to find other capital projects to fill in the, to use the million dollars, not to borrow an extra million dollars. As defined.
I think I understand what you're asking, and my response to that is, it will be based on the master plan scheduled projects that have either already been in the pipeline or ready to come as a result of the schedule that's been put in place for future summers. But it's not likely, and I just want to make this clear, it's not likely that other capital projects during the winter months will be instituted other than those that are on the master plan itself. So there are other capital projects that you know from time to time that we have, that we consider administrative projects or anything like that. It'll be specific to the master plan. And it may not necessarily get done, it may not necessarily get done in the next, you know, it may take another eight months before it's actually used. I just wanted to be clear on that.
I misspoke. Master plan projects.
Yes.
So we don't know necessarily if it's going to be the concrete or the pads or the canopies or whatever. It may not. We may have to wait a year in that case and bid at a more opportune time to get a better price. But in the same main time, property will look through to find out what can be pulled into this coming school year to be used, not during this summer, but also during the next year's school year.
Yeah, exactly. Part of the timeline is for them, for the construction committee to come before the property committee to get plans for next summer, working so that by September, October, the board's, you know, generally moving those projects forward for preparation for bids. So that will likely occur as the timeline is laid out.
Yeah. And I have not attended the last couple of property meetings, but I know that on the master plan, there were things like a ladder replacement at Woodland. And there's things like that that seem that they're not necessarily dependent on a summer activity. So I'm sure there's things that we could pull through in this case that are going to be required in the next year or two.
Well, definitely in this coming summer. We have work that we know, we don't know the specifics, but we know there's work that needs to be done at Eagleville. We know that the high school HVAC dehumidification project is on the horizon. We also, you know, depending on what transpires in the next, you know, several months regarding the Arrowhead property, you know, there could be, you know, fees associated with drawings and other preparation matters. So it's quite possible that that extra million dollars could be used in a number of different ways, but it certainly won't be sitting very long.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Personnel items, Mr. Regina.
Thank you. Few items for the board's consideration this evening, a few additions also to the agenda from the work session. I know the first one is the administrative resignation, and it's of Dr. Troy Sisnovik.
So I shared with the board that I received his resignation this past week, and I guess I'm pleased and as well as saddened by the fact that he has accepted a position with, I believe it's Northwest Lehigh School District, which happens to be the school district where his children go to school and where he lives, and as assistant superintendent. So we wish him the very best, and certainly will be in communication with the board about how to proceed forward with, you know, refilling that position. So we wish him the best of luck.
The next item on the board agenda is one classified resignation. The next item, we have one establishment of a professional position. This is the .5 addition for the Arrowhead kindergarten. Last week, I told you there were six open seats in kindergarten. We now have one open seat in kindergarten, so those numbers are changing every day that we walk in. We have two employments for administrative positions. Three employment of professional positions. There is an addition from the work session agenda. This is the guidance counseling position at the high school. That's a replacement of the Stacey Aliski resignation. We have one employment of a classified position. This is the addition to the accounting specialist position in Mr. Bricker's office. We have six employment of summer temporary positions. These are student workers that work for us. Five of them will be custodian hires and one of them will be a technology hire. We have four change of status professional positions. Two change of status classified positions. The addition to this is the extension of a current position that we have as an office assistant in the people services office. That current person works 10 months, 3.5 hours a year, and that will be extended to 12 months at five hours a year, five, excuse me, five hours per day, 12 months per year. We have one compensated professional leave. Again, just a reminder, that is sabbatical leave. One professional uncompensated leave. Three classified uncompensated leaves. We have 12 supplemental contracts. There's three additions from last week. One is the jumpstart staffing, one is the summer library staffing, and one is the OZABOTs staffing, lesson development staffing, excuse me, and one addition for volunteer list.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. May I have a motion to... Actually, first, are there any personnel items that the board would like to consider separately? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve all items listed under personnel? Mr. Ryan and a second, Mr. Winters. Any comments from the board? Mr. Winters?
I just want to thank Mr. Sisnovik for his service in the three and a half years. He has been very professional, taken on projects, and we wish him the best of luck, and I'm sure he'll do a job, a great job at Northwest Lehigh.
Just a quick question about the summer library program, the supplemental contract. Is that covered by the Shattan Dell group, how they had supported it in the past? Is that amount covered by?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? The motions are approved, seven to zero. Curriculum and programs, Dr. Katona.
Excuse me, thank you. There are two items this evening. One is to approve the AP bio textbook as presented here, and the other is to approve the language instruction educational program plan or LIEP plan, which is attached.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the textbook adoption and language instruction educational program plan as presented? Ms. Drummond and a second, Ms. Kankrow. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. For policy, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you. On the agenda for your approval this evening are five policies. Policy 121, field trips. 124, summer school. 125, community education. 249, bullying and cyberbullying. And 351, drug and substance abuse.
May I have a motion to approve the policies as presented here this evening? Ms. Hall and a second, Mr. Winters. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. On to gifts and donations, Dr. Zerbi.
We have one gift and donation to approve, a gift of $1,000 to Arrowhead Elementary School, recipient of the 2019 Respect Program Education Grant from JP Miss Garlandson, to be used towards the Respect Program and recycling in the school community. We also have an appointment of management trustee, appoint Mr. Timothy Bricker, to serve as the management trustee for the Bucks and Montgomery County Schools Healthcare Consortium. Just to be clear, there is a labor representative on this consortium, and Mr. Bricker, if approved this evening, will continue to be the management representative of the district on this consortium. PSBA delegates are listed, and please know that if approved this evening, there's one shoe that I need those three individuals, Mr. Ryan, Ms. Drummond, and Ms. Hall, to sign. The appointment of a board treasurer, we approved Daniel Penza to serve as a treasurer for the board, effective July 1, 2019. Appointment of a school physician is listed. Appointment of a school dentist is listed. And appointment of a football team physician is listed. Then there, under I, there are memorandums of agreement. And I'm going to ask Mr. Regina to speak on behalf of those three matters.
Thank you. Each of the memorandum of agreements, three of them are similar in nature with, one is with MEA, one is with MESA, and one is with Teamsters. The nature of the agreements are to change the pay, the way we pay our employees, so going to a twice-a-month system versus the every-two-weeks system that we currently do. This will also change the frequency of deductions with the health care. So both of these memorandum of understandings focus on that. The fourth memorandum of understanding is to reclassify a position from a C3 to a C4. A lot of the duties that this position is doing is cross-training with other members within Mr. Bricker's office, and it is appropriate to reclassify this position as a C4. And at this moment in time, there's no, excuse me, there's no additional cost to that transfer.
And the last item under section 13 is approve the settlement agreement between the district and Dennis Grady.
Does anyone on the board want to take any of these other items separately? Mr. Earnshaw?
Item J.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve items A through I as presented here this evening? Ms. Kankrow and a second, Ms. Drummond. Any comments from the board on these items? Mr. Winters?
Just a curious question. Our school physician is not responsible for home football games. Why do we have a separate physician for football? Is it a... We're paying a $1,500 retainer? This seems...
Let me find that out for you, Mr. Winters. I know what I did in a previous district, but I can't speak to this one specifically, so I'll find that answer out for you.
Any other comments on these items? All right. All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Now, may I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement between the district and Dennis Grady? Mr. Winters and a second. Ms. Hall, comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries six to one. Dates for board members' calendars, we have our summer slowdown, it seems. Property and finance are still meeting in July. And then we have the work session and the regular meeting coming up July 16th and 23rd. Is there any old business here this evening? Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, one question on policy 126, which is one of their first reading for class size. So we're, I understand, I'm not suggesting we change class size to go above 22. But with this change, does this eliminate any flexibility? For example, if we have four classes of first grade that all have 20, three have 22, one has 23, would this policy change force an addition of another class, so that every section would be 22 or less?
Well, that is dependent on, so for example, we have the policies in place which are the threshold for which the administration will plan for the class size. If we find ourselves in a position where we have one class of 23, we would inform the board that we have one class of 23. And if it's so directed to do otherwise, we would likely recommend, like we've done in the past, to just have a class of 23. The challenge that we have is, as many of you know, we've had a policy for which we had an administrative practice of hitting 22, and that's why it's coming before you with this change. And so I think, in my opinion at least, managing the policies, we would operate in the same way that we've always operated, and this policy change would likely just align with the way we've been practicing. So if there are things where it's one or two over, we would inform the board prior to finalizing the schedule. And if it was the will of the board to make a different decision than what the administration recommends, then we would, you know, take that, you know, we'd obviously make that change occur.
All right, thanks.
I think where the comments from the public and your question, Brian, is that if you had three, you had 75 for kindergarten and tworchester, would you make the decision at that point? And the current policy, the direction would be, that would be within policy, but it's not our directive. So our directive is 22 for kindergarten. So I'd rather have the directive to be clear in our policy. It is not restrictive. Dr. Zerbi could come back and say, I have 75. I recommend that we go with three classes of 25 for kindergarten. There's no, we're not locked in. It's up to the board or a future board to decide to accept three classes of 25 or split that into four classes of 18, 19. So I think it's clear, and it does not, it shows the interest in, at least my interest, to show the class size in earlier grades to be at a lesser caseload, I guess you'd say, than the move as they move through elementary. So I just want the clarity. I still don't, it does not box us into anything other than that. We could go, Dr. Zerbi could come back with 78 and recommend 26, 26, 26. It's up to the board. If I'm misspeaking Mary or anybody else, but it's trying to have clarity to the community and give a direction to the administration.
No, I understand that. Like I said, I wasn't suggesting, and I would never want to see personally kindergarten class of 22. I mean, that should be, that's a reasonable number, and some people say that's probably too many. I was just going to try to get an understanding of the background for why the change is being made, knowing that we had the administrative guideline of 22 and the way we've operated in the past, was trying to get a little bit more background there.
And I think the thing that prompted this to come before the policy committee at this time is that the policy committee has a practice of reviewing policies every five years. This one was up for a five-year review, and when we saw it, we thought this would be a good opportunity to put into policy what is already in practice in our schools.
If I could just add a couple extra words there. The flexibility in this policy is still there, just some of the wording that was untouched from the prior policy, it'll be in this one. Minimum and maximum class size guidelines. It does say when financially and administratively appropriate. And it also says in the very last sentence, board shall be notified when class size goes above the maximum. So there is still all of those same, you know, existing language in there to provide the board with the flexibility it may or may not need it to feature in this.
Anything else for old business?
I just want to add, we did have a good amount of discussion regarding this topic, and I think we, all four of us, were in agreement on proceeding in this direction. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I just want to clarify that the administration was in line with that, too. I mean, you know, Mr. Winters said it well. We were doing an administrative guideline, and then we have a policy. And then, if you remember, when we do presentations regarding, you know, what are we targeting? It just cloudies everything up. So this, in our opinion, you know, cleans up the conversation.
All right. Anyone else with old business? New business, Ms. Kankrow?
You know, I had talked to Andrea Reese, and I talked to Dr. Katona, that I was going to bring up. So, you know, with the new year coming, I've received a lot of phone calls from the community... So, you know, with the new year coming, I've received a lot of phone calls from the community with concern when it came to looking at honors courses and the criteria, the data points that are being utilized. So I just wanted to urge the education committee and for Dr. Katona, if you could just analyze the data points that are being utilized, particularly going from 6th grade into the 7th grade honors. I think there's some areas of concern, for instance, when making sure the teachers have that criteria available at the November conferences for parents to be discussing, and then being able to review it with the parents again in the February conference, allowing the criteria to be up there on the website, so that all people are aware. Recently, it was just in a newsletter in January that Dr. Gorilla had shared that information, so. And then when we look at it, there's just this one week of availability to discuss it with the counselor and then Dr. Thompson, and it makes it difficult, because one of the biggest things is, there's different criteria and data points, and I do agree with them. My concern more so is with the PSSAs, and there are areas where they meet the criteria when it comes to our curriculum and the grades that the teachers are providing. However, if those PSSA scores are not being in, then that child doesn't have that opportunity. And what concerns me is, there's many parents that have said they're going to opt out of PSSAs, and with this new reform of funding and participation to the PSSAs and providing a certain percentage, I just think it's going to increase it, because people were not allowed to get into honors based on it. Now, I know that Dr. Thompson, Mr. Thompson, had reviewed cases and spoke to him, and I think he did a fantastic job. However, I think it's an opportunity for the 6th grade staff to look at their curriculum, look at making sure they're aware of the data points, but then seeing if there's a weighted data point, and just making sure, because I worry about the PSSAs, honors, and participation. I think it's frustrating some of the parents. And then when you look at those that opted out of the PSSAs, how are they then looked at with their data points, and is it equivalent? And then also with the gifted program. So I just want to be able to, we look at the process, make sure it's out there, it's, you know, it's clear to all the guidelines, because we want to grow the students within their strengths, and not only with weaknesses within the conferences, so, thank you.
Just to add on, I think, Jen, you're spot on, not the, the willingness of a student to be challenged, the willingness of a student to try, and has the interest in being in a class like that, should be an influence on if they get into that class. If they're going to get a B minus in that class, but they're stretching themselves to get that B minus, that's a much better outcome for the student and for the district than for where to say, "Well, then, you know what, they're not going to succeed, they're not going to be able to get an A in that class." And I'm not saying that's how it's done, but I'm just saying, if we're going to really be around the whole child and the development, we should be also supporting their ability to stretch and learn to, in some cases, fail. So I think if we're going to embrace the whole-child mentality of the skill sets they need in the 24th century, that we need to have sort of the curriculum activities and the passes between schools that allow for that type of behavior to happen. And also, if it becomes a deterrent against the PSSAs, I mean, not really, not really the outcome I don't think we want, though.
No, and I agree that having that transparency around what the criteria are, I know that's something I've heard a lot over the years, that it's difficult information to track down for parents, and sometimes when they find the information, it's after the fact. So I agree. I think it is something that would be good to have out there and available to people, and I'm sure that we can find a way to maybe not change everything, but at least certainly make it better.
I just think it's unfortunate when kids have a grade point average of 98 in a class, and we're talking curriculum and strengths within our school system, and then their PSSAs wind up being proficient. You want to make sure there's a balance. You don't want inflated grade. You want to show the excellence of our education. So I'm just more concerned about those parents that are saying they're going to opt out, and that's, makes me concerned for funding. I think we, you know, it's serious now as we move forward.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for new business? All right. At this point, the board will take courtesy of the floor, so this is an opportunity for residents to provide comments on any matters that could come before the Board of Directors, not just items that are on the agenda this evening. Mr. Andrews.
John Andrews. I speak to the subject of the Arrowhead School. This evening commenting on how it precludes better education. At your June 4 meeting at Arrowhead, we heard of a plan for new and larger replacement school and an estimated cost of $35 million rather than an expensive renovation. I gave a speech there calling this new school want or desire a sham, not needed, unaffordable, and that the K to 4 structure pulls down our students' education and development relative to a K to 5 setup. So there are many problems with your want. Fixing any problem first requires that it exists. Here, one aspect of every K to 4 school is that grade 5 PSSA scores are noticeably down versus scores in K to 5 schools. Also affected are learning in later grades and high school rankings. Tonight, I expand on educational aspects of grade structure. First off, I note the majority of districts choose K to 5. Very few choose K to 3. Masterman is selective and number one in rankings in Pennsylvania per the U.S. News and World Report April 2019 rankings. It is not a coincidence that it has just one school ahead of its grade 5 to 12 layout. At the other end of school setups is the Oxford School Area District ranked 394. It has five schools before the kids get to high school. I've used regression analysis, or RA, a statistical tool, to get a best-fit score formula using data parameters, math data, reading data, and economic disadvantage data, that reproduce scores that lead to the U.S. News and World Report rankings, when the number of schools, pre-high school, are also included. This year, methactin score dropped us to 59 from the 20s a few years ago. Simply put, I claim the drop is tied to the opening of Skyview and the switch from K to 5. RA supports my multi-year request for K to 5 at Skyview and the other elementary schools. Now, related to discussion of K to 5 is that Dr. Zerby's January 15 presentation had erroneous classroom functional capacities for Skyview as a K to 5 school. I corrected that, but I have not seen any change to his document, and I think that's a failure of the system to fix errors that are affecting decisions. Keeping the K to 5 setup is a flawed choice, ditch it. I also note that putting grades 6 to 8 at our COLA and closing Arrowhead provides efficiency, major cost savings, and better utilizations for our projected enrollments. I'm going to hand you out a copy of the speech that on the back of it has some of the regression analysis detail. So the score formula that was utilized to develop parameters allows us to say what would be the impact on methactin by switching from a three-school arrangement that we now have to a two-school arrangement, namely K to 5 and 6 to 8. It would raise our score by 11 and our rank to about 14. Need I say more? Go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Malik?
At the February 26, 2019 board meeting, the board approved the expenditure of roughly $425,000 to install a brand-new state-of-the-art security system with an annual fee of $6,300 a year. Now, can anybody up there tell me whether, or when, the installation of that new system took place? Do you know?
That's not something I would answer, Dr. Malik. That's a matter of security. I'm not going to bring that up.
Well, it's not a matter of security. When it's installed is not a matter of security, right? And the question is, is it installed right now? Is it complete? It's not a matter of security. You know, I don't think you know what you're talking about. But were you constrained financially when you bought the system? Meaning, you had to go for a lesser system because you didn't have enough money? Can you tell me that one? Were there financial constraints? Okay. Well, the reason I ask is according to Dr. Zerby and his affidavit, the system apparently is flawed as it does not film every part of the school and contains blind spots. Now, how can that be for $425,000? Are you aware of that? Because if we have a system that's flawed and has, doesn't film every part of the school and contains blind spots, should be fixed. Actually, should get a professional in here to come evaluate it, and we should get our money back. Don't you think? For the safety of the kids? Would you agree with that? Why don't you look into whether our system has blind spots, and it's not filming areas of the school? And let, maybe let me know. Are you guys familiar with the Arrowhead Forward Faculty Tour Committee? Do you know anything about that? Do you know it? How many members of the general public, meaning taxpayers, are on that committee? Do you know? There's 26 on the committee. School board directors, representatives, teachers, principals. How many general members of the public like myself are on that committee? Do you know? Zero. And they're the ones having input into the school. Maybe you can explain why that's the case. Now, regarding the community center presentation, did anybody ever discuss the possibility of a joint venture with Lower Providence and the community center as part of the new Arrowhead building project? Are you guys aware of that? That's a news secret. Apparently, that's the case. Maybe you don't now. Talking about putting a community center in the new Arrowhead, you didn't know about that? Not aware of that? Maybe you could tell the public sometime about your plans. We don't have to file a write-to-know request and find out that way. Because Mr. Enshaw had a good point about Worcester. I'm not gaining any benefit from a center in Lower Providence. It takes me 20 minutes to drive there, and it's not going to affect my land value one bit. So if you guys are going to go ahead and do a community center, we want one in Worcester.
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Yep.
Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Ms. Skinner, I know you were patient earlier. Sorry, Mr. Bickelman, I'll get to you next.
All right. We'll hear your call. Thank you very much. Kelly Skinner, Lower Providence. I just wanted to go back to discussing the gifted program. I think on April 23, at the last regular school board meeting, it was determined that Dr. Zerby would create a committee. We were going to do a top-to-bottom review of the gifted program by way of curriculum here at the district. If I have that wrong, please correct me. My understanding is that, based on data I was able to find from last year, there's 4,795 students in the district, or somewhere thereabout. Of those, approximately 15% partake of gifted support services. That's approximately 709 students. And apparently, that number has risen over the past five years in the tune of 5%. Now, what we're seeing, my husband and I are fairly new to this process, but what we've seen over the past few months, by way of the board meetings and committee meetings, is that in just about every aspect of curriculum, methactin is moving the ball forward, trying to move the ball forward, constantly researching best practices. In just about every area of curriculum, you name it, including the Monco Tech Center, we heard about it tonight, mental health, which is incredibly important. I would imagine, without knowing for sure, that even your coaches look at best practices when preparing their teams. We even gave them lights so they could see better. But based on my research, what I was able to glean is that there has not been a top-to-bottom review of the gifted program. And methactin turns 50 this year, and I don't know that it's ever been done. If it has, I would love to know when and what kind of review that was, just for purposes of curiosity. And so, if that is the case, it means that, you know, gifted children and gifted parents, parents of challenged children, really haven't had a voice in this community in all this time. And, for example, by way of example, a lot of, I've been in touch with dozens of challenged parents in the past few months. It was a lot of work. And many of them, as many of you possibly were, children, gifted children themselves went through the gifted program. My own gifted teacher, as a child, came through methactin as a student, so I presume that was in the 70s. The format she used to teach gifted programming to my class when I was a child substantially mirrors much of the formatting you're using today here at methactin in 2019, which means, at the outside, that in some aspects, large portions of this program have not changed in upwards of 40 years and possibly 50. And I don't think that's because somebody looked at the program and said, "This is an awesome program, let's keep it." I think it was more by default. We just haven't taken the time and effort or resources to look at it. And, you know, given that it hasn't been looked at it for so long, I think that underscores the need that it be done now, and that it be done right. To that end, in speaking with many challenged parents in the community, it seems that whatever committee you set up is going to set the tone and the stage for the success or failure of this review from top to bottom. And, you know, I looked at your curriculum supervisors and their background, and I did not see any evidence specifically indicating any experience with gifted children, teaching experience with gifted children, any meaningful interaction with them, demonstrating any particular interest in gifted curriculum, let alone an examination of best practices. On the other hand, your gifted teachers are really in the best position, I think, to lead that committee, because they deal with these children daily, they know what they need instinctively. The teachers are passionate about it, they instinctively know what works and doesn't work, and I think they're in the best position to move the ball forward and make the recommendations and lead in the committee in doing so. I just don't think that an administrator can just pop in and breach this learning curve, especially not in the timeframe that we've initially set out. And so I would ask the committee for two things. That is, to allow the teachers to steer the committee and give them the resources, particularly in light of the budget surplus that we have, and this hasn't been done in decades. Give them the resources they need to properly conduct the research and do it right and do it well. Give them the time to do so, because for all we know, this issue may not pop up again for another 50 years. This is going to impact not just us, but the next generation. The last thing I want to request, I know I've gone over time, last thing I want to request is transparency, and that you either appoint a parent to the committee, or you establish a format so that parents can provide impact to the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Mr. Bickelman, thank you.
Joe Bickelman, Audubon. One thing you never have to say up here is, "Correct me if I'm wrong." You never have to say that. You know, applied, you know, I don't want to forget about this. Applied landscaping brought suit against the district and brought suit separately against Dr. Zerby, okay? And tonight, we approved a payment to applied landscaping. There was no amount in the check register, but we accounted for the check number. There was a transfer from the capital campaign account of $190,000. The people that wrote the checks and donated money, they had no idea they were going to be paying for a settlement. I don't know what portion of that settlement was related to the Dr. Zerby part, or a separate suit, and the district suit. And I know there was discussion about the district was holding back money And I know there was discussion about the district was holding back money from applied landscaping. Apparently, there were some issues with the work and I guess applied landscaping went after the district for, you know, payment for that. But I was at all the discussions, and when I heard what I thought I heard during the discussions, I said, boy, somebody's, that's, that's an unusual statement, what I heard. So, you know, has any district insurance plan that the district purchases for its administrators, has that paid out any money for either of those settlements to the board lawsuit and to Dr. Zerby's separate lawsuit from Applied Technology? Has a district insurance company paid out any part of that settlement? Am I allowed to know that in this great country of ours? I'm assuming they didn't. Okay? Because the district purchases what they call an errors and admission insurance policy, that's a type of professional liability insurance that protects companies, their workers, and other professionals against claims of inadequate work or negligent actions. So apparently, what happened didn't come under inadequate work or negligent, referring probably to the separate lawsuit from Applied Technologies to Dr. Zerby and not to the board. If the total amount related to Dr. Zerby was $190,000, that's a lot of donated money for the fields going out. So, you know, I don't understand that. I really don't. I don't have all the pieces to the puzzle. I'm just talking about my observations. But I do remember that one night during discussions about things with Applied Technologies. And I just hope it wasn't related to that, but, you know, the district is out $190,000 and it works real hard to save money. You know, Mr. Bricker does. I know the board does. Mr. Earnshaw has, Mr. Ryan, they're questioning to save money. So, you know, I hope we don't forget about that. You know? Maybe it should have came from somewhere else, somebody else's checkbook. All right? So I hope you don't forget about it as a school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor?
Kelly Arno, Lower Providence. Just first, I'd like to say I'm really glad to hear that the policy is getting caught up with the administrative policy about the 22 per classroom in K through second. I think it's great because it was hard to track that information down when I did look for it as to what was official policy, so I appreciate that you're doing that. One thing I did want to speak about, though, was regarding the elimination of one section of third grade at Arrowhead that I've spoken about before. I'm wondering if there's been any update as to the total number of third graders for the next school year. I know as of October, there was a prediction of 24.3 per class with three sections. As of April 1, there was prediction of 25 per class, which would be the maximum. And I was just wondering, now that we've gotten those forms back that they send home about people leaving or coming in, has there been a change to that? So I don't know if you could look into that at some point. In April, I urge you to do some due diligence and look into the significant special needs of this particular group. There are many students with one-to-one, either teachers or aides with them throughout significant portions of the day, even students who maybe, obviously, I don't have access to their IEPs. I do not know the specifics of their details, but there are students who, it has been implied that are not meant to have somebody with them full-time, but as I've seen volunteering at the school, they pretty much do. So I hope that that's been looked into so that you're aware of what type of grouping of students will be maxed out in a classroom. If you haven't yet looked into that, I'd urge you to please consult with the teachers. They are the experts. They're the people that you hire to be experts. They're the people that are with those students all day, every day. If you could consult with the second-grade teachers from last year, I think you'd get an enormous amount of information. If you've done so already, fabulous. If not, I would just urge you to do that prior to the start of the school year when we start with maxed-out classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Dr. Zerby?
Jen Zerby, Lower Providence Township. I just wanted to publicly state that I am one of four taxpayers that were on the Arrowhead Forward Touring Committee. There were not zero. That was what was previously stated by Dr. Malik. There were four of us, not, including teachers who are also taxpayers in the district who are on and invited to attend all the school tours. So I wanted to first state that. I first want to say that I came to hear about the township presentation, and I think it's, sounds fantastic. I know, I'm sure there's more details that you have to dive into and more legal things, but I think the fact that they are willing to pay the cost for possibly asbestos and molds and things that are on, improve the grounds, a walking path, it sounds really fantastic. I know a lot of friends who kids were on that waiting list and couldn't get on for Camp Perkiomi this summer and are really struggling for childcare for the summer. So I think it would be fantastic that it would also be opened up to Warsester Township as well. I think it's crucial when you go into these, the thoughts and whatever happens with the political or the legal stuff of the ownership and the title, that you just consider not losing full ownership of the school because as, my mom was on a school board, as we've seen, schools that are mothballed have had to be reopened and used. I know everything says, like, our population is declining, but we've seen more growth and more housing development. I think it's cyclical. And so I think it would be great to be able to keep this school as a school in case we need to reopen it, but I think it sounds fantastic to use it as a community in the meantime. I also want to say on behalf of a friend who didn't want to get up, Mrs. Kankrow said exactly what a lot of my friends have been talking about. Transparency is definitely needed for the honors programs. I had a friend who, and we kind of learn as our firstborns go through, and that's how a lot of us have learned, a friend came up to me saying her gifted child was getting 90s. She felt like, okay, he's in the gifted program, I'm not going to complain about 90s. And then I found out 93 and above is what he needed to be in honors, so now her gifted son is not going to be in any honors going forward. So she wished she would have known that in the beginning of the year to have pressed him more because now the 90 does make a difference compared to the 93. So I think it's huge to transparency and telling parents and being clear at the conferences and on the website what is needed for them to get into that program. And I do think, I really hope that that first read for class size becomes a final read to align your directive to policy. I think K1 and 2 to be a class size of 22 for all the research that's out there for reduced class sizes, but also for presentations-wise, I hope that becomes a final. And then, I know I sent you guys all a lengthy four-page email about the third-grade teacher position at Arrowhead. I just kind of want to bring that up just a little bit. Mr. Winters had pointed out that as a board, you can take 75 and make it four classes instead of three. You used the example of kindergarten at Warsester. I just plead with you guys to use the example of third grade at Arrowhead. I stand by everything I said. I hope you reconsider your vote. As I said, it is a very, it's a class of emotional behavior and academic needs that you can't just look at 75 divided by three equals 25. Our policy for grade three is 25 per class, and that's it. To be, so right now, as of today, there are 75 going in, so you're already maxed out. The class coming in behind them, so entering second grade, has 86. So you're going to have to bring that teacher back the following year. So you're just looking at one year. I don't think it's really going to save you much money. It's not going to cost you more. You're not hiring someone. Someone was already there. So I just, just ask you please to reconsider this before it is too late for the start of the year and you can hire someone that's competent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Going once, going twice? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Winters? I'm sorry, did you, before we adjourn, did anyone from the board have any final comments before we? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Winters, Mr. Ryan, meeting adjourned. Thank you.